Do you want me to pledge allegiance?
Yes.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome everyone to our April 4 meeting. First item, please note the council's in full attendance. First item on our agenda is items from council. We do have one proclamation for the National Safe Digging Month. Is there anyone here to receive it? I have a nice printed proclamation. If not, we'll read it. Why don't we dispense with that? Go ahead and read the proclamation and then...
Sure. This is a proclamation signed by Mayor Paul Polosik and it reads in part, "Whereas each year, the nation's underground utility infrastructure is jeopardized by unintentional damage by those who failed to call 811 to have underground lines located prior to digging. Whereas the Common Ground Alliance and its 1,700 members promote the National Call Before You Dig number, 811, in an effort to reduce these damages. Whereas all parties agree that safe digging is a shared responsibility, now therefore I, Paul Polosik, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do officially declare the month of April 2017 to be National Safe Digging Month and encourage excavators and homeowners throughout the country to always call 811 before digging." And it is signed by Mayor Paul Polosik.
Thank you, Thomas. Very important service. I have used it myself. I know we're still under items from council. Mr. Bachnight wanted to share some information?
Yes. As soon as the article was in the paper about Lyft, I had a number of constituents contact me, express their desire to have Lyft. I've been talking with Thomas and he's been helping me through it. Plan is to have a draft ordinance hopefully ready by the end of the state legislative session. And the reason I say that is there are a couple of bills, House Bill 100 and two in the Senate, Senate Bill 113 and 176, that deal with, they call transportation network companies. Essentially, if those bills pass, municipalities will not have any regulation authority or permitting or anything to do with transportation network companies and it will all be done through the state. So there wouldn't be a need for us to amend or add to our ordinances already that we have adopted. But if that fails to pass, then we will need to create a new ordinance relating to transportation network companies. The last session of the state legislature passed the insurance requirement already for transportation network companies. So that portion is already taken care of through the state. And so some other things we'd have to address are background checks, permitting, the rate structure and being published in an online format. Some of that language is already out there already. So we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel around it. But hopefully we won't have to do it and the state's going to take care of it. That's a good or bad, good and bad thing. Takes power from municipalities, but I can understand from their perspective, they could have 50 different cities and a different rule in each one, so.
And if Councilman Bachnight, if you'll allow me to add on to that, part of what we were discussing that I think is probably important for the public to know is that the transportation network companies like Lyft in Victoria are currently regulated the same as a taxicab. They fall into our definition of a taxicab. And so they are currently regulated, but that regulation was written in the 1980s. And so I don't think any of our taxicabs currently look like a 1985 taxicab. And it probably needs to be updated to reflect this. So when Councilman Bachnight talks about bringing something forward, I don't believe he's talking about necessarily regulating them differently than we would regulate taxicabs, so much as updating the ordinance to reflect the current...
Yeah, my plan is to have it as a level playing field, but I know insurance regulations will be different. The state sets this for transportation network companies and they set it for taxis. Taxis being much lower than what's required for transportation network companies. But trying to keep the playing field as level as possible and recognize that this is a different platform for which they operate.
Can...
And I have some minor concern about that same issue. Assuming that the article I read was correct, the people from Lyft and others like that seemed to think there was no regulation that they had to attend to at all. And I believe that to be incorrect. If it is not, we'll have to have that same discussion at that time. But it made it seem as if they were exempt from any city regulation.
Yeah, I would disagree with that characterization. Now, I would urge council, let's not get too deep into deliberating on this topic since it's not...
No, it's to bring it forward.
But we will have...
I want to make sure all pieces are covered in this discussion.
Absolutely, I understand. We will have it on the agenda at a future date for more extended deliberation.
Could you just expand on the, you said something about insurance, it's the same, but is that for the company, is that per car?
Okay, I can get pretty detailed here. There's three periods that's...
In general.
Okay, so the transportation network company, right? Typically, it's a person that signs up to drive for one of these companies. They have a personal automobile and they're covered under a personal automobile insurance policy. The state has said, no, you can have, instead of having a full-blown commercial policy, you can be covered for the three periods that occur when you're in the transportation network companies, I guess, contract employee state. You've got period one, it's when you go physically to your device and you turn on the app and you're waiting for someone to contact you to start your call. But you're on the clock, pretty much, but you're waiting for a call. So they've set those limits. And real quick, they are $50,000 per person injured in a wreck, $100,000 per accident and $25,000 in property damage per accident. That was the state law that was passed in 2015 and went into effect on January 1, 2016. That increased from the 30, 60, 25 that was previously there. And then subsequent to that, there's periods two and three. So period two would be when you accept a ride, you know, someone contacts you and you accept to go and you're on your way to go pick them up. And then period three is when they actually get in your vehicle. And period three ends then when the call is ended on the application, online application. Those, there's a million dollars overall on that and I don't know if I have it right here in front of me. It's a total of a million dollars in coverage and how that's spread out... Actually, I do have it somewhere. It's up to a million dollars per occurrence. And they typically, the rideshare or transportation network company provides that insurance for their contract employees. Different insurance companies have provided some gap insurance. So it's a, like, some of them have a $2,500 deductible during periods two and three and you can buy an insurance policy to lower that deductible if an accident occurs, as well as you can beef up your period one insurance to higher limits. But that's where you don't have to have the full-blown commercial auto insurance.
And that's the state law right now?
That is the state law right now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
But no background checks or any other requirements?
Our city ordinance calls for it. And the way House Bill 100 is written, it's a third-party background check and it specifies which databases have to be searched and everything.
Sure, we'll hear more about it. So thank you for the update, Mr. Bachnight. Items from council, anything else? Oh, we need to pull D2, by the way. We're going to just deal with that next time?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. No other changes? Okay. So seeing no other items from council, we'll move to citizens' communication. Anyone here that would like to speak, please come forward and just try to limit your comments to five minutes out of respect for everyone else. And name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Costin and reside at 624 Pennsylvania Avenue, Victoria, Texas. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The reason why I'm here tonight is to voice our concerns about the Lyft and I understand that, you know, it hasn't come in yet, you're just looking at it. But myself and other owners, operators of transportation companies here in the Victoria area are concerned about Lyft coming in. We've asked for over a year for the city council to go ahead and try to pass a fingerprint background check. I understand it's been back and forth, back and forth because of different reasons. And I'd like to know from Thomas after I get done talking, is it where it's at? If he knows where it's at? The, my concerns are a couple of concerns about Lyft coming in here. The city of Victoria makes money off of everybody, okay? The county does too. We pay taxes. I think our taxes were like $3,800 last year for, to run our operation over here. But Lyft will come in here and not pay a penny, not one cent, okay? My thought would be tax the Lyft, okay? Put a tax on them, just like you do hotels. You know, at least they're paying something, okay? I would love to see the fingerprint background check go because that requires an NCIC check rather than a TCIC check. The items that we've all talked about was there's no accountability with Lyft. They're not accountable to anybody. Right now, we have employees showing up to work, taxicab companies have employees showing up to work. The owners, the operators, the managers, they get to see what these employees are looking like, what their conduct is. You know, we can tell if somebody's pretty much been drinking, been using anything. We're not going to send people out to the public like that. A Lyft driver has no accountability at all. I can be sitting inside a bar anywhere in this town, walk outside, turn my phone on, say, "I'm a Lyft driver. I need $35 so I can continue partying tonight. Go grab a fare." Where's the accountability? There is none, okay? People say that Lyft can only be hired through the app. Lyft cannot be, Lyft can be hired anytime, okay? Is all Lyft drivers and Uber drivers that we know around in the Houston, the Austin area when they had them up there, the San Antonio area, people would hand these little cards out that says, "Here's my number. So when I drop you off at a concert, I'm going to tell you, hey, call me up. Don't call Lyft. Call me up. I'll give you a $30 discount," okay? What stops that? Nothing, okay? So the driver legally is not on the clock, okay, with Lyft. There's no accountability there again, okay? So therefore, if he has an accident, that million dollars insurance that you were talking about, Mr. Bachnight, is no good at all, okay? That's my concerns. Transportation companies inside the Victoria area right now, we either have manifest or we have orders. We take orders over the phones. There's accountability to who we're picking up, okay? People just don't stand on the street corner and hail down a cab in here in Victoria, okay? And you definitely don't hail down a limousine. So, you know, there should be some accountability to that. I'm afraid that with Lyft coming in or Uber coming in to this area, that there's never going to be any accountability. You know, right now, we have no ground transportation company that can go ahead and check Uber drivers, Lyft drivers. Heck, they don't even check us, okay? PD's the only one that can check us right now. And, you know, we've urged that, okay? So I would tell the council to be very cautious, okay, about approving Uber and Lyft into this community. I really would. The state bill has not passed yet and we're going to wait and see where the state bills go. And then you'll probably be back up here in front of you again. But like I said, whatever the state is going to come up with, we're going to have to follow what the state says, okay? And I understand that. I'm not trying to ask for a monopoly on something. I'm just asking for caution in the wind, okay? I would like to know from Thomas, though, where we stand on the background check, the fingerprint background checks. If he has anything to add to that one right there, sir?
Yeah. Well, how long has it been since, where are we in that? Has it been a while?
I can tell you where we are if you'd like.
Counsel, y'all want to hear an update on that?
Sure.
Just briefly.
Sorry, Bob. I asked counsel because we don't typically interact with...
Okay, I'm sorry.
...people at the podium and so I wanted to make sure that that was counsel's desire that I do that. I was actually looking at that this morning to make sure that I knew where we were. The question came up this morning, where are we on it? And I have a checklist of items from the police department that can be incorporated into an ordinance that would allow that fingerprint background check to be completed. And I've asked for a meeting with a member of the police department tomorrow for us to work out how that would be incorporated into the ordinance. And so we are working forward on that project.
Okay. Thank you.
Not that this is pertinent, but after 9/11, one of the various acts that was passed was one that prohibited over-the-road truck drivers, Class A truck drivers, from being felons. Shortly thereafter, it devastated the trucking industry for quite some time until they found replacements. But it was a common place for people that got out of prison to drink a bug. But when they made it to where you couldn't hold a license, Class A license, if you were a felon, it knocked out a lot of drivers.
Okay.
You could hold a Class B or C, but not an A.
All right, we're still in citizens' communication?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Costin. We're still in citizens' communication. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Now would be the time. Okay, seeing no one jump up, we'll close citizens' communications. We have no ordinances and we do have a consent agenda, though, so we'll move straight to that.
There are six items remaining on the consent agenda tonight that'll be approved by a single vote. They are first, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of March 21, 2017. Second, the resolution approving the purchase of hardware and software for the phone system upgrade project and authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with inside public sector for the installation of the hardware and software, utilizing a government cooperative purchasing contract in the amount of $63,836.70 and declaring an effective date. Item D4 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the second renewal of the debris response and recovery contract with Ashbrit Incorporated for cleanup services in the event of a disaster and declaring an effective date. D5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Harrison Waldrop and Uheric LLP to perform the city's annual audit for the year ending September 30, 2017 in an amount not to exceed $48,000 and declaring an effective date. D6 is a resolution authorizing the 2016-17 sanitary sewer line cleaning project to all points inspection services incorporated for their low bid of $86,674.40, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date. And D7 is a resolution approving an expenditure for the repair of a pump and motor at the River Pump Station by Northside Electric Motors in the amount of $65,419, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete this repair and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Items pass. Resolutions.
Item E1 is a resolution reappointing Dr. John McNeil, D.O., as the health authority of the Victoria County Health Department to enforce state and local laws related to public health and reappointing Derek Neal as the director of the Victoria County Public Health Department and declaring an effective date.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? See Dr. McNeil in the audience?
And Derek's over there.
And, oh, there he is.
Derek's on, we can't see because of the podium, Derek.
Just see your eyes a little there, so that's... Counsel, if you have brief remarks?
Yes.
Come on, yes, sir. Okay.
Dr. McNeil, first of all, good evening, council members. It was about a year ago that I came down from Abilene and interviewed with Charmel and also the Commissioner's Court. And she put the pressure on me at that time that said, I came highly recommended from Robert Hanna. I hope that I've upheld that recommendation and also exceeded that. There's a couple of things that I do want to mention to the group. I think that's important in terms of some of our accomplishments this year. It's important that I have an opportunity to communicate that with you. Our funding has increased since April 11 by $333,000. We are being considered for a Texas Home Visiting Grant, which actually will improve births with high-risk pregnancies in Victoria County. That's critically important because the way we're going to change this community is really by starting our public health and prevention efforts while that infant is still in the womb. We have to begin to change our community from that regard. Dr. McNeil has been in the role for two years now. And unfortunately or fortunately, he just went through his health authority training in Fort Worth. So I'll have him speak on that. So I think that he even got more of a gravity in terms of what his job entails and he left smiling. So I'm hoping that he's still excited about the opportunity. So I wanted to mention that to you. But I would be remiss if I didn't introduce Delila Perez. Delila Perez has, in January, as of January 1, 2018, Delila has been named Assistant Director of the Health Department. She's been with us over 20 years. I don't want to cheat out on your retirement. 20 years and she's been over clinical services. But she's the Health Department Assistant Director and I'm working with her on, you know, some of those leadership things because she's extremely strong in the clinical side. But we want to make sure that she has those things that will be beneficial to the organization and to her throughout the professional development process. I will be leaving this with you. This is something that we did in both Houston and Abilene and it's a yearly report. And it talks about our accomplishments as a health department. It's something that the city can take a lot of pride in. I bought about 30 copies and I'll leave them outside for general consumption for our communities. But I just wanted to mention those things to you and let Dr. McNeil chime in as well. Thank you.
I'm not sure what else I could say. Thank you for the opportunity to be the local health authority. I did find out that I can initiate a quarantine, which I think is kind of a cool deal. Now, there's a lot of stuff that goes into it and we've had some good leadership over there and I think that our health department is really a lot stronger and better than it's ever been. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, okay? Passes E2.
E2 is a resolution appointing a member to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals to fill an unexpired term and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item E2.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. And that would be Mr. Schrader to fill that? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Schrader. He's going to be a great addition to that board, especially as we go through and continue to look at the energy code and really come to understand the commercial aspects of it. He's going to bring a great deal of expertise and wealth of knowledge to it, so thank you.
I agree.
I agree.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, all right. Eyes have it. E3.
Item E3 is a resolution accepting a grant from the Victoria 100 Club in the amount of $7,223 for the Victoria Police Department to be used for upgrades and gunsmithing for three rifles, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept the donation and complete the upgrades and gunsmithing and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Chief, would you like to comment on this?
Yes, Mayor, members of city council. Obviously, what's in front of you is a resolution to accept a donation, generous donation once again of our partner. It's been an excellent public safety partner for us, the 100 Club. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to, if there's any questions concerning what's the content of that, I can certainly answer it. But at the same time, also to publicly thank the 100 Club and Howard, who is here today. If you want to come on up.
Again, on behalf of the 100 Club, we very thankful that we can help out in any way that we can for the first responders. I would like to give credit where credit is due. Dr. Dennis Tobin, I believe he works in some type of advisory capacity, was the one that brought the need before the 100 Board, championed getting this grant passed in a quick manner because I think from what we heard, it was something that needed to be done pretty quick. Normally, our routine is we would do these things from August through October. But we're very fortunate to have Dennis on our board and helping us in this way. So again, thank you very much for allowing us to help out. And like I said last time, as long as our funds are doing well, we'll be here to help in any way that we can. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Question? Can you just enlighten me on what gunsmithing is?
Cleaning and addressing any of the weapons systems, breaking it down, bringing it back up, manipulating the weapons, fixing them, cleaning them. Those types of things are all part of the gunsmithing operation.
I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
Are you reusing the scopes from the old ones? Because I don't see scopes in here.
That would be my guess, that the scopes are... We usually typically look at scopes differently than the gunsmithing operation. So they probably were already listed in our budget for replacement. I'm guessing. I mean, I don't have it in front of me, but that's typically how we would do it.
And I don't have it coming into memory, but I do know your budget for next year is requesting some equipment for the SWAT team. So I don't know if scopes are in there. And Gilbert Shaggy, yes, I think scopes are in there for next year. So anyway.
And I just wanted to volunteer in case you needed help sighting them in.
We'll keep you in mind, Councilman.
Get that drone to film it.
He can also volunteer to clean them too, can't he?
Oh, I don't mind doing that either.
Well, you know, if you shoot it, you got to clean it.
You bet.
Very good. We can't thank the 100 Club enough. They do a lot for us, so it's very appreciated. Counsel, nothing further? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. E4.
E4 is a resolution ratifying the city manager's acceptance of a grant from the Texas Attorney General's Office in the amount of $5,800 to be used to help fund forensic software and specialized training for the Victoria Police Department's Cyber Crimes Unit and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Okay, motion and a second. Are there any questions, discussions? Some of that backroom software, all right.
By passing this, we're kind of also approving the use of the money and the, because apparently there's some other monies that the city's going to use. I'm not sure if, I guess those are already in the budget. So it's not just we're accepting the grant, we're going forward with the whole project.
I don't think there's any other city money. It's, well, or, oh, you're using forfeit, oh, training budget, I'm sorry, Jan.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were being efficient here and approving it all at once.
Very good. Any further questions? Did you have anything to add, Chief?
I do not.
Okay.
Questions?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, okay. Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Now we move to city manager reports.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Mayor, members of council, pleased to report to you tonight that the audit on our fiscal year ending September of 2016 is complete. That report was completed last month. It was delivered to all the respective agencies. It was also posted on the city's website under our financial transparency page and is available for leisurely reading at some point. We asked Steve Van Manen with Harrison Waldrop and Uheric to come in and just give a few points about the audit. Certainly, you probably haven't had a lot of time to dig into it. So he or I or Gilbert are always available to answer your questions once you get into it. So I'll have Steve come up and give you a little bit of information on the audit.
Thank you, Andrew. Mayor, members of council, the comprehensive annual financial report was complete. And I use the term comprehensive because the document is 240 pages long and the required disclosure really stops on page 80. After that point, all the information that's presented in this document is voluntary. It's a report that gets submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association each year to be judged, to be in compliance with all of the required disclosures. And I think this is the 20... Gilbert, do you know how many years?
I lost track.
The city has received the award since 1983, so whatever that comes out to be. The report itself is broken down into four distinct sections. The introductory section includes a letter from the city's administration talking about the local economy, future projects, et cetera. There's also a reproduction of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The next section is the financial section. The Independent Auditor's Report starts there and that's the same type of opinion that the city has received in prior years. It's what's called an unqualified or a clean opinion. Also included there is what's called the Management's Discussion and Analysis. Now, Andrew mentioned to, if you want to review the report, I would certainly recommend the M-DNA is where you would look because it presents a very summarized report on what happened last fiscal year for the city. You know, you don't need to go through 240 pages to determine whether or not the city's financial condition improved... or not the city's financial condition improved or declined from the prior year. There was a increase or in what's called the net position, which means that the financial condition of the city did improve for the 2016 fiscal year. The general fund, the fund balance did have a decrease, but it remains at 38% of its annual operating expenses, which is a very healthy fund balance. Following the financial section, you have what's called the statistical section. Now, this, for those that want to know, what was the sales tax 10 years ago compared to today? What was the motel tax 10 years ago compared to today? What were the departmental expenditures 10 years ago compared to today? This, you can find that in the stats section. So again, a lot of good information there. In the fourth section is what's called the single audit section. Since the city receives over $750,000 of federal monies, not only do we do a financial audit, we have to also do a compliance audit. And compliance meaning that the city spends the federal dollars in accordance with the rules that the granting agencies present. And the findings there were, there were no non-compliance issues this past year, nor were there any weaknesses noted in the internal controls for the operations of the city. Now, I'm going to stop there, and if y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to attempt to answer them tonight. If questions come up after tonight, certainly invite me back. Certainly Andrew and Gilbert are always available, but I'd be happy to come back at a future council meeting if requested.
I don't have any right now. Counsel?
A lot of numbers.
It is. There's a lot of good information in here. I know y'all are going to start the budget process, and that stats section is a good source of information. Certainly want to express our appreciation to the finance department. You know, they do a great job for the city, and they certainly make the audit go very smooth. Certainly want to tip our hats to their efforts. So appreciate their help.
We appreciate that, and we appreciate you. And don't cut him no slack. Always check and double check. So.
I appreciate it being available on the website so that we can get to it, and so can the public.
Gilbert's grinning when I said that. So we're proud of the work that department does, and we appreciate you looking real hard at it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Just me? Okay.
I have the next city manager report, and it's about the city-county fire agreement. And put it on there for tonight. The county commissioners met yesterday to discuss our contract. We do this every two years. We talk about whether we're going to amend it or, you know, make changes to the contract. So it's that time of year. The contract calls for any amendments or the termination of the contract to be done by May 1. I did not propose any amendments or termination to the county for the fire contract, but they are in the process of reviewing what they would like to do. The judge did visit with me about an increase of the contract, and commissioners talked about it yesterday. He didn't have any further news today for me when he sent me an email. So I don't have an update on what they're proposing to do at this point. I do know it's going to have to happen pretty quickly to stay in compliance with the contract if they want to amend or terminate. If nothing is done by May 1, it rolls to 14.5% of the fire budget, which is the contract terms that were agreed to in 2007. It's been amended a couple of times since 2007 to do a fixed rate, but the current terms would go back to the 14.5%. The sheet I gave you shows from '07, when that contract went into place at 14.5%, the number of calls, the total calls and the calls in the county, and the dollar amount that county has paid for us. As a reminder, we're doing about 20% call run in the county outside the city limits. So, and they're paying right now about 12% of the fire budget.
Questions that might be asked would be, when we go on a call out in the county, who shows up first? The city of Victoria or the volunteer fire department?
Well, I can't answer that. Tanner can, and I'm sure it's going to depend. But and...
Just a curiosity.
And Tanner, while you're standing there, if you don't mind, talk a little bit about what the volunteer fire department does compared to what we do. And then I'd like you to go ahead and talk a little bit about medical calls, what type of medical calls we handle in the county.
Okay. Would you mind repeating your question?
Okay, the question was, when a call comes in, we send out a unit. They also notify the local volunteer fire department. Do you have any statistics on who shows up first and what percent of the time?
No, sir. We do not, we do not track that. I think a lot of that depends on the type of call. We dispatch a volunteer agency on almost every call we go to, but we don't always see them on scene.
Okay.
So basically, in the time of day, sometimes can affect that. During daylight hours, when most people are working an eight-to-five job, their response is probably not going to be as great as it would be on a weekend or in an evening hour.
Okay.
And to follow up, typically, the assistance we receive from the volunteers, and we make many different emergency call types, but we'll, for this point, stick to a house fire, is they're very good at providing additional assistance to us. And what I mean by that is they're going to deliver water, they're going to assist us with things on the outside of the structure. We typically do not see that they have the, are going to go interior and do any kind of interior structure firefighting. It depends, though. Some of the agencies are geared to be able to do that, and some are not. So as far as EMS response, obviously, we, some of our most impactful traumatic calls happen in the county. And the reason being is those are typically going to be vehicle accidents. And there's a lot of high-speed highways that traverse Victoria County. And so the thing the county gets from the city is, it doesn't matter if we have a two-vehicle accident and there are six people involved and all six need to be transported, we have the capability to deliver in that service. Or if it's just a single person. And we do not, they have access to all the city resources. And we, we will add as much as is needed to mitigate any event that we respond to, irregardless of whether it's in the city or in the county.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, does the type of call out in the county, is it similar to the city as far as, I mean, certainly a greater majority of medical EMS versus fires? Is it 80, 20, 90, 10?
Well, I think it follows the same model that we see on the city as our total responses. We're about 77% of our calls are EMS, and about the other 23 are, you know, roughly going to be other fires or grass fires. You know, we, obviously, we find a lot of grass fires in the county, depending on certain times of the year. So.
And I know that your relationship with the hospitals here, be it D-TAR, be it citizens, and particularly the cardiology groups and everything from stroke slash heart attacks and things like this is excellent. And so I'm concerned for, even though I'm here representing the city, I certainly understand the timeliness of getting patients to the appropriate level of care is dire. And they certainly, people need to think about that.
Yeah. So to, especially on the cardiac side, the example you gave is, you know, we're transmitting EKGs at the patient's side to the hospitals. We're calling stimuli alerts in the field, which means that we have detected the patient is having an actual heart attack, so that the hospital, whichever hospital we go to, has their cardiac cath team ready. And, you know, every year, I come back and try to show you guys our benchmarks and the things that we're really trying to do to improve in our patient care. And that's not just for the citizens of the city of Victoria. That's for all citizens that we respond to.
The other point would be that the, obviously, our firehouses are strategically placed across the city to cover as much area. And I don't know where they would receive care. Would it be spread out, or would it be a centralized location? That's not for you to know, and it's for the judge and the county commissioners. But if they're coming from an isolated one source to get out versus being spread out, that will increase time as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's going to have an impact.
That same line, isn't some of the hospital's certification as Level whatever trauma centers dependent upon your ability to deliver the patient ready to go for treatment?
Yeah, we play a large part on, for stroke, for chest pain, and for trauma. And so anytime they're going through accreditation, we are a part of that process. And so we go over and meet with their auditors, and they interview one of our crews, go through one of our ambulances, look at our capabilities, look at our benchmarks, and that ultimately does play into the effect of whether they're successful. Although it's probably a small piece, it does have a factor in their ability to get certified in those areas.
And what certifications do your employees have that, you know, pertain to things out in the county that may or may not be available through a volunteer fire department, like Swiftwater Rescue and...
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. We, you know, when we sit and look at a training for a year, we look at the impact of the types of events that we could be involved with. And that could be the DuPont plant in Vista, it could be high-angle rescue. And so we will look and see, okay, what levels of training do we need to be able to have? And so we go out and we get rope rescue one training, rope rescue two training. We look at confined space. At Caterpillar, we went out there, and we've done some training in their facility. So we're always looking to see what do we need to be prepared for based off of what could happen. And in the same way on hazmat, I mean, we've got a lot of time and effort built into our hazmat response. Most of our hazmat calls are going to be in the county. Swiftwater Rescue, you know, we have guys that are Swiftwater Rescue one and two trained. We have boat operators. All those things we probably wouldn't need if we were just responding in the city. Those are, those are things that are unique challenges that we run into in our covering the almost 900 square miles that we presently do.
So y'all participated in a high-angle rescue on, out in the county not too long ago, correct?
Yes.
And so if the county didn't have an agreement with us, we wouldn't be able to respond?
Wait, I don't want you to have to answer that. My recommendation would be to counsel that if the county did choose to terminate this contract, that we would, if they wish for us to respond out of the city limits, that we would have to enter into a local agreement that would be a per-call basis on what we're called out for. Yes, sir?
Okay. So we could figure out some way to do it, but on a per-call basis, it probably wouldn't be close to that number.
No, sir. If you looked at the per-call basis of what, if you just charged them today, you're well in excess of two, probably eight, 2.8 million versus, you know, 14%.
If you're strictly looking at
Yeah, calls.
The call volume and saying, what percent of our calls go beyond the city limits, it's 20%. And it's been 20% for the last four years in a row.
So even at this 14.5%, the city is still, it's tough to quantify exactly, but subsidizing the county for fire EMS?
Well, I need to remind council that, that if you take all of our property taxes for a year, it'll cover the budget for the police or the fire, but not both. If you take all of our property taxes and all of our sales taxes, it covers the police and the fire. And in a short budget like this year, I'm not sure it covers them both completely, just a tad short. Am I saying that correct, Gil, or is it okay? But just to give you an idea, now, citizens of Victoria are paying for a first-class fire department, which I think we have, and we got the certifications and so on to prove it. And we're paying also county taxes. Why are we paying double? Might be a question to be asked.
Yeah, that's always the question.
It's, I'm sorry, Tanner's standing up there. You know, our medical side of the house does absolutely incredible job, and Dr. McNeil's sitting out there. We operate under his license and under his guidance. So what we're doing in the field is under his tutelage. So, I mean, we just can't talk about how good a job we do without giving him some thanks, too. Those guys do it day in and day out, but Dr. McNeil's there to help us with that.
Yeah, we moved recently to what's called rapid sequence innovation, which is a very high-risk type of medical procedure. And I tell you, a medical director does not feel comfortable doing that unless he knows for sure that the system can handle that event. We don't need to do rapid sequence innovation because of calls we make in the city. We need to do that because of the calls we make in the county, and we're going to be with that patient much longer. And so, I mean, everything we do is geared towards providing service in the county as well. We, you know, our tanker trucks, our brush trucks, all those things, that's so that we can be just as effective on any event that we go to. We don't respond differently because we go into the county. We just change two trucks. We don't take a ladder truck out there, and we take a tanker in its place. Outside of that, it's the same. So they're getting a first-class professional fire and EMS organization.
And does that help the homeowner's insurance rates? It's not given specifically in the ETJ?
Absolutely. That's ISO rating. And so, you know, if the ISO, if they're within five road miles of a fire station, a thousand foot of a hydrant, then they're obviously going to be, they're going to fall into a better insurance rate than if they're outside of those parameters. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of complexity to this. The same way with somebody dials 911. Somebody has to answer that call and determine what agency is going to be best suited to handle that event. I would really be worried about the fact that we're now, would have to possibly look and determine if this is a city call or a county call before we divert that to the appropriate agency, when everything we do, we measure in seconds in an effort to get our folks on the road as quick as possible. Because at the end of the day, we want our, we want the people that have called 911 to survive those types of events. And so that worries me as well, is how all that would work.
One final comment. Great conversation. And Tanner, thank you so much. But at the end of the day, the county is, has a decision to make on, you know, what they wish to do with the contract. And so hopefully, I will hear from them within the next couple of weeks. So we are very interested in continuing to provide service to the county residents because I think we're providing an incredible service for the dollars that the county's paying. So the county has to make that decision on what they wish to do.
If, Charmel, just real quick, if the contract is not amended, does it still come back here for us to?
I don't think it will because it just rolls into that 14.5%. The current, the contract is in place.
And it's in force?
To continue, yes.
If there is a suggestion.
If they wish to amend or terminate.
Right. And you'll bring that back to us if you need to. Otherwise, that's your duty to fulfill that and sign that contract?
Sure.
Okay.
Is it set up that it automatically renews yearly?
It's every two years.
Every two years.
It's a two-year.
Traditionally, we have it in a recent time, yes. I just would like to see a certain amount of equity or a better part of it.
I have a question. Since we have a contract with the county, does that mean that when somebody like the fire department goes out there, does that individual get a bill like we get a bill here in city?
Yes.
For ambulance, we do not bill for fire.
Okay.
But for ambulance, we do.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything further, counsel? Any further reports?
No.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you.